I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we approve the minutes from our August eighth meeting on entertain emotions to that.
Motion to approve the August eighth minutes.
I second.
All those in favor signify behind. We approve the accounts payable vouchers. Shall entertain a motion to that?
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable vouchers.
I second that motion.
All those in favor signify behind. And we've approved the payroll, I say payroll the last time. Okay, everyone said the council payroll docket as well.
Motion to approve payroll docket is submitted.
I second.
All those in favor signify behind.
And so I just wanted to present the advanced time user agreement. I have submitted this to Pat. The only thing, he said it is fine, the only thing that he would change if it was able to change. They did not want to change it was if for any reason there were to be litigation that the company is actually based out of Michigan, so it would be in a Michigan court is the only. Yeah, so I'm not sure. Um, I don't foresee litigation by any means, but anything could happen. Um, so in this agreement, this would then be allowing for a time clock for Jefferson County to be automated that would be able to work cooperatively with our payroll system. Um, there has been buzz amongst the employees of whom this applies to and whom this does not. And this is not stating anything of that nature right now. This is just getting the ball rolling so that we can establish that and lay out those ground rules.
This is just an agreement for the company.
This is an agreement so that we can start the process. Cause we do know that there are a lot of areas that we do need this hourly employees. Um, and then this includes all the training that goes along with that. The department head training and the employee training of how to use the system. Um, I have already actually presented the cost of it to council. Um, council did approve the money, the first, uh, the initial setup and the first year of service at the estimated two hundred employees using that from, to be paid from Harpo. But this is a once in a lifetime situation to initiate. Uh, I think we're probably behind the times on this.
Say we're not the only county, do we?
No, we're not the only county. And this is something that I was told in, at twenty-one, at the first auditor's conference that I went to as auditor, it's not a matter of time, like it's not a matter if you're ever going to do this. It's just when and when it's going to be mandated. So I think it's best to get ahead of the curve and not be the ones forced to be in this. So, um.
Sometimes some of those that force you to do it, make you do it by their method and. Something we'd like to.
Right.
Like building a jail.
So it's just using or accepting the agreement between advanced time is the company. And it's, the program is attendance on demand.
So they'll do that from their workstations to their computer?
It will be up to, so the department heads will be able to set up their department. They can pick, so there will be time clocks in every, I think I accounted for five time clocks. Um, at the larger facilities and then from your workstations, you can clock in or there is an option for mobile app for employees that might do remote work or employees that travel so that they would be blocked in. But that would, and then that then sends their clock in times over to their department head. Their department head approves their payroll from there. Employee can also can request time off through this. Um, I think it's going to make it more uniform across the.
Schedule vacation.
Track your time, track your time. It'll keep a bank of how many hours you have available to you. But I think a lot of people are scared, but I think it's actually going to benefit the employee as much as it benefits the county.
I make a motion, we look into this time agreement.
So it's not just looking into it, it's.
Right, this would be the agreement. This is the agreement of the program that we watched the demo on.
Sorry.
Nope, nope, nope. So I'll make a motion that we go ahead with the advanced agreement, advanced time agreement. I second that motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify behind.
Yeah, just one announcement. And thank you, by moving on this, hopefully we can have this up and going sooner. Um, I think they said it might take a while to implement and they'll start in different areas implementing it first. So in doing the training, so hopefully we can be all up and going by the end of, or beginning of the year across the board.
For my, for my turn now? Sorry. Those are private. Alright, uh, next we have kind of an add to the agenda is the appointment of Julie Tevenall to the Jefferson County Cemetery Board. We've got some turnover on the cemetery board and we'll do, and so this will be uh, for filling a vacancy and it hurt, this appointment would last through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Julie Tevenall to the Jefferson County Cemetery Board.
I make a motion to appoint Julie Tevenall to the cemetery board.
A second.
You have the discussion, all those in favor signify behind. We're going to reverse order or should we, who's in front, who's in?
I said webinar six.
Huh?
I said, I just had webinar six.
Webinar six?
I got Peter, I'm playing on it.
I just have one thing, um, a little bit of concern with ovations. Um, last weekend our Annie Alley went down. It's for automatic number identification and automatic location identification. So when people call nine one, it displays their location on our map. Uh, it went down, I reached out to Ovation. Um, they didn't seem willing to send anybody to assist us, but I did have it digital on the way. I appreciate I'm enjoying it, they're being willing to help me out with that, but. Um, so then I followed up, I was trying to follow up on Monday about the server relocation. I've not yet heard from anybody on that one either, so I guess there's like a lack of response on my part. A little want something like that.
Smooth some of mine down a little bit to follow Brandon with the salvation. Um, this isn't the first time that we've had like major outage and call for some help. And, um, this was five o'clock on Friday. And that's a pretty disappointing answer, one system in your phone system, all of Brandon's system is down. And, um, they were bonded, it's five o'clock on Friday. And we filed the emergency procedure, called the number that they have this call in office and they set this thing up and that's what they tell us to do if it's an emergency, because they can direct people on the five and one in there. It's still family, this, this blew big on, on. The printer here, it's, it's, it's on our parrot house because if we're logged into our, our county, um, one draft, and you want to print something from that, you have to log out of, of one of the wireless routers and log into another wireless router to get a print to print. And then if you need to switch documents, then you gotta log out and get back to, um, that. So it's like one step forward, two steps back. With a lot of things, it seems like they kind of fix profile or a problem or an issue and it's like two or three things. I, I literally have three profiles apparently now, I've got Troy's profile, I've got my first one. And then there was some issues with those talking back and forth to each other. So instead of trying to figure that out, I just have the profile.
You have to log out to print to?
Uh, yeah, yeah, if I, if I print off the one draft, I'm gonna log out of the wifi that we set up all these computers and stuff like that on throughout the building. Um, and then get on, um, Jefferson public, um, wifi network.
So can we?
There should be a standard.
I asked.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's a pretty big ask. I don't, I don't understand, but, uh, I don't. At, at this point, it's like, it's just easier to just do that and try to shuffle through it all a bit. I think things would be much more efficient here, do you agree? If, uh, if this, and that's just one simple, easy problem, I'm not a computer guy.
Might just be an address.
But yeah, I'm sure it's probably something simple, but by that time I don't know if that's fair to ask about, so. So I, I don't know. Anyway. So we talked about getting a emergency response boat quite a while. Um, I think that we, we recognize that we do have a need for, for a while and, or have had a need for a while. And I think I brought this to your attention before is we rely on, on a city of million population, six hundred people, volunteer fire departments to come rescue things and we're the biggest county in Cincinnati and, and Wolf on the river. Um, so it, it makes sense if we have some, uh, some, some funds where we've, um, it's, it's not crashing the budget or we're really taking something away there. Um, this, this will be a multi-purpose boat, so it'll be all emergency services to service their needs. Um, so, uh, police, fire, rescue, EMS, um, any of, any of emergency services that might happen to need that or, or have a request. Um, the second page, you see that new versus old technology, this DG S Pro twenty-six. Um, that's, um, that is all, um, I forget the DP's, DC PH, I forget what plastic that, the acronym is now. Um, but this is an entirely plastic boat put together. Um, they, they built these, started building these in Brazil for the military. Of course they softened up the image now after working with some, um, some departments in Miami. And all the void space that it happens to be inside of, of, um, the channels that they make and, um, and the bumpers that they make on this thing are foam filled. So you can put enough weight on it to drag it underwater, but if you release the weight to that, it's going to pop back up and it's not going to, it won't sink. You can cut it in half and it won't sink.
Tight, um, so. Identity polyethylene.
Yes, what they said. So, um, you, you can beach these things and not tear up the bottom too bad. If, if, if it ever gets to be a significant enough gout where you feel like you need to address it, then they bring somebody up. They basically have a big gun that heats the stuff up, they fill in the crack, they scrape it down, um, flat and you take off and go again. Um, so spent a lot of time talking to a couple of departments that use these on the regular. Um, spent most of the time talking to, um, a police department in Miami, um, and the fire department. Um, when they first got this, really kind of give them down the road about it. And, um, and now the fire department has, they're, they're on schedule to purchase five of these within the next two years and, um, and probably additional few more. From, from everybody that I've talked to down there, they use them in, in, in different waters, right? They've got, they've got slow moving water, they got creeks, they got bays and they've got high tide and they've got big waves coming off of, uh, either side depending on where they happen to be and, and have interest in. All of them without fail said that, that this is like the best all around platform that they've ever used. And, um, and that when they can replace some of their older boats, then they intend to do that. Um, we'll get to Austin in a few months, the next one over this Lake of Salt boat. Um, most everybody that got Coast Guard grants fifteen years ago had bought a platform similar to this.
To PT boat.
Sorry.
To PT boat.
Yes. So that, that front gate is hydraulic, so it lifts and, and lowers and raises. Um, everybody always talked about putting a, a four wheeler on there, the end of the hollow somewhere. It's at the other all a bit, no department that is, is even put that into their plan of use has ever, ever done that in the fifteen years that, that the oldest one that I've talked to has, has had their boat. Um, New Albany has this new DG S Pro, that's what we went to look at, um, a few months back. Um, they currently, they also have a Lake of Salt boat, same platform as this. Um, they have sent the Lake of Salt boat twice, it's hit the bottom twice. And, um, that's why they're, they're switching out, that's a little bit, probably some operator error on that. And then some bad design, so the back of this, uh, the back of that boat, I should have got a picture of this. There's two maintenance, um, openings on the backside of it, over the, uh, the engine slide. And, and those maintenance, um, ports are right on the same line as that black line across the boat. So it doesn't take much when you bank this thing for water, if the wind's blowing in the right direction to lap up over the top of the back of it. Especially when you drop that gate a little too far and it picks faces the front of the boat up in the back of the boat, it's just down in the water, so. So they just think that twice. Um, newer technology, um, lifetime warranty on this, uh, on, on the, basically the, the body, the hull of the boat. So we're looking at, uh, at two V D F three hundred engines. Suzuki's, um, are supposed to be some, the, the top notch engines, direct the small winner are, um, Ben Suzuki. Um, according to those guys there and several of people talking throughout the country, that, that price for us is two seventy-nine, five nineteen. The Lake of Salt boat, this guy had never even sent me a quote yet. Um, I've asked him a few different times and he's still not sent one down, but he told me initially, um, after the upgrades that, um, that they have, have said we need to make on that boat. That's, that's Parksville, Indiana's boat. And after the upgrades that we've talked to them about making, um, this guy's initial, this, this general ballpark is four hundred eighty-five thousand. My guess is, is he probably has a bigger estimate, he's not going to send it. Um, because I don't know why he wouldn't want to sell them though, if he had chances to try. Um, Miami talked about the water aluminum boat hulls, um, that when they, you know, hit a bunch of waves, things like that, this thing, if what's, so is welding going to break at some point? Um, where this, um, this plastic boat, I'm not going to do that. Um, they, they think, Miami thinks that they're going to be able to replace, you know, two and three sets of engines to make this whole last for, for probably like most of the guys that are, they're currently there, they're, they're pretty good. Um, it's got turnaround tank versus turnaround tanks, that's not. There's no internal fire water pump inside of that, of that plastic boat, um, which is, which is, um, good and bad. It adds a whole lot of weight, adds a whole lot of maintenance issues, things like that. Um, Lake of Salt boat has internal fire pumps in those things, but it's a huge maintenance nightmare, takes the boat down completely out of use. If we put a, a portable pump that we can put on and take off of that, if that pump breaks and we can still use the boat, if the internal pump breaks, then we gotta send it somewhere to get fixed and there's nobody here that does these things. And we, let's see, talk about that, that, the trailer, those guys that talk about with that, uh, with the Lake of Salt boat, it's, it's under, it, it's, it's under capacity. It's, it's, and, and he's a bigger trailer and, and definitely some major upgrades. Uh, we've talked with the city of Madison, they, they committed a hundred thousand dollars and they're hard to manage, so they can leave us some. I, I've mentioned this to the council, I've been in budget here and, and at your last meeting, um, about two hundred thousand, want to give us a little bit for like PFDs and, you know, some supplies to go on the boat and all of this, some radio equipment. We need to, I mean, this stepson, that step up a lot of this. So, um, so I think this would be a great platform for us. Coast Guard grant didn't, didn't even make it past the initial, um, phase, so, um, we were only going to be able to walk up to a hundred and fifty thousand. After I filled out that grant report and the budget sheet on stuff, it said we were only able to, we, we might get seventy-three thousand if they award anything. So, um, so I would like to get that money, but, um, but they just don't have any, anymore, I guess. And, um, so we just, we waited a little bit too long, um, with a couple of, you know, unforeseen issues. When the person took a look at this, regardless, here we are. And, um, so, um, I think if there's a way we can figure out how to get a couple hundred thousand dollars to add the city stuff. I mean, we still have to work some things out, right? So, um, we're working on, you know, policy and training right now. Um, my brother went to a NASPA course, um, paying for his husband's been on the river more than anybody that I think that I know in my lifetime. Um, he's happy to come and help, they seem to be thrilled to come, you know, get involved and, and even come help. Probably just pile this thing for us, just come onboard as a volunteer and, and be a part of the team. Insurance being issued, storage could be potentially some issues, um. We're hoping we can put in a couple of different spots, but you know, I, I wouldn't get, go and ask and, and all of this to make us think, but we just don't, anyway, we're going to even do it. So I'm not going to approach anybody about that until I have a little more firm, um, information about yes or no. Um, so other than just a couple of other questions to me, and it seems like it's, you know, pretty, pretty straightforward, um, ask, especially since we had two cruise ships on the river that were here, um, what was it, two, three weeks ago? And both of those carry more than three hundred passengers. And, um, so a twenty-foot John boat that's, that's, um, manned by Milton Fire Department, population six hundred, it's, it's going to cut it. And, um, and I, and I, I mean, I, I think at this point, I, I'm, we're going to take this one on the chin if something happens about there. And I, I think we got the responsibility, we have thirteen miles of coastline, sounds odd to say. And, um, somebody helped me with the math on that, then actually found an app and, and I figured that out, he's a big boat guy, been flying, so sure, so. Um, I think we got key people to operate this thing and, um, and, um, I think we got a, a pretty solid group of people that are interested. And I won't be just, hey, I want to go on the boat today or hey, I like handy boat and so let me, don't make heat or make me go for a ride. And, um, exactly, so you know, it's just like anything else, we've got very few shot things. And so, um, I think it's, it's pretty easy to figure things out. Um, we just got to figure out where, where, you know, these, these monies are coming from. And, um, city has committed a hundred thousand because they know what they have in that arc of fun. And I'm not sure where the county is at this point. Um, so the only other questions we have to decide is really where we are going to, you know, um, transport this thing from, I mean, we've, we've got the warehouse in Winter Haven, Winter Hazard or whatever, then we got a place to store and tow it from. We, we know worst case scenario, that, that, that we can put it out there in warehouse and get it back and forth. Um, and, and we'll look at a couple of places, the city garage is an option and, and, and potentially, you know, top of the American Marina. And, and see if we can get a space down there, uh, now. And, and that, with that extra two hundred thousand dollars, that, instead of even getting us like a dry dock down there at that place as well. So, um, that keeps staying on the water and all of this, so, um, so. So that's, that's, uh, kind of it. So I, I think it's, if, if there's ever been time considering boats that come through and all that stuff in the past, and we've been pretty lucky about it. And, um, I mean, how many boats do we count here and I on the water, for the rest, like twenty, twenty-five, maybe? Um, they're just out there listening to music and hanging out and all that stuff. Um, I, I think that if people know that there's a resource available to us, then I think the call will just start coming in. Um, I've been a, not much of an avid voter myself, but I've got myself back in the bank after running out of gas and, and if anything going sideways on me, I always go upstream in case, in case it's really bad. But I've had us in from, from the middle of the river with skis before, I've, I pulled rope and run, I was swimming before, walking down the bank before. And, uh, so it'd be really nice to run out of gas and I got an option to call somebody, keep it to the bank next time, so. And, and I, I mean, I think, again, I think it's an asset that we really kept kind of in this. And, um, you know, we have, we have two of the largest events on the water in Ohio by the sector. There got to be in one, the, the second biggest, next two thunder over the wall. And then, um, and then the, um, the vintage boats.
Five to five.
Yeah, the five to five, I mean, those, the, the next two biggest events on the river between here and Cincinnati, so, um. So I, I, I think we're probably a little overdue on this and.
So would the intent be to like have it docked, say April, October or something and then when most activity's on?
Yep, yep, yeah, absolutely. And with these outward engines like that, they're getting pretty good, so a lot of them don't even really need to be winterized. If, if it's a dry dock, then we can pull it out and, and drain it. And, um, if we got to take off and go in December, then, then, then we can take off and go in December, so. And they talk about making things and stuff like that, said, you know, these, these engines are just almost foolproof anymore.
How many is it?
Twenty-six foot.
And then touch with the twenty-six foot.
Yeah, yeah. Those are a lot of people, it's a pretty good sized boat and, uh, it's, it's basically the same boat that New Albany has, so, um, I will, just put the schedule time and go and take a look at that, I'll let you know when it's going to be. Or if you know a, a good day for you or whatever, you know, we can run down. I mean, there, it's, it's, it's there on the water right now and they'll, they'll take us right down, it's, it's, it's one of the issue for them, they're, they're happy with it. Um, these guys I talked to in Miami, I mean, they're like, they're all about it.
Just wonder where they took the picture, I'm going to say it's not in New Albany, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
South Pacific island, we're not taking any trips to South Pacific.
Yeah, I'm, I'm guess it's probably a little computer town or racing, a little. But they, they, they start the manufacturing process in Brazil and then they ship stuff here. Um, so, um, so I guess, I guess two scenarios for us, I'm hoping that we can do as New Albany was able to do, is they had one that was there in the process of being finished off. And, um, whatever department that had ordered, that ended up backing out, so they bought that and it got shipped up here. Um, if it's filled, then we're, we're looking at twelve to fifteen monthly time marker, so. Yeah, so I, I hope that's worst case scenario and I hope they tried to under promise and wait over deliver on this whole thing, so I'm hoping that they say you got twelve to fifteen months and six months to ready to go, saying, hey. So, um, so that, um, that's what I got there.
How tall is it, Matt?
I, I, I think it's, um.
To the top of this?
I think it's like twelve-six or close, close, I'll have to look on this back and see, to be honest with you.
Would we have room in the logistics building?
Yeah, I, I think it'd fit out through there and, and these things, um, you know, they bolt on back and forth, all this stuff. They even make someone, if, um, if we needed to, then we can list some boats, drop the top. And like, it's not a slot, so we're not even taking it off, we're just like, you know, grabbing it for a little bit back up, so. Um, so I, I, I think there's, I think there's, I'll check that, see what I think, I think it's sixteen foot or, and I think it's like twelve, five, or seven. Um, let's see here, full scale electricity side will be here in Jefferson County on August the twenty-ninth. Um, ID is supposed to be down here in, in, in force. Um, there's, there's new damage assessment, um, criteria and training, that's what this, this event is going to be for. Um, it's going to be a flood, that's going to be the scenario. There's, uh, several addresses downtown that have been identified, are going to be buildings that they're going to be walking around, actually physically doing some damage assessments on. Um, they've got, what they say, some, some pretty good, um, artificial intelligence pictures of a flood on these properties that they, they, they picked out. I've got letters with my card and we're going to drop off to every house that, uh, that's, that's going to be quote unquote assessed. And I'm just saying, hey, heads up, you know, people aren't going on your property, you know, this is something they're, they're looking for us, they're, they're just going to be on the sidewalk, they'll be investing and having identification with them and all of this, but, but at no time were they walking on people's property and all of this stuff. And I'll, I'll do the same thing on the radio and, uh, we'll talk with the, what radio station in the paper, so. Um, hopefully we get some identification out and, and people actually get it, which will be unique. Um, the insulation project's just about to start, um, bumper's going to come take the final look tomorrow, or I'm sorry, Monday. And, um, I've talked with, um, the IE, the I, the Indian Department of, um, Energy. I D O E, whatever the acronym is, can't keep track, yeah, sorry.
Stay on, stay on energy.
Yes, there we go, something like that, the insulation project. Um, so hopefully we're going to get that thing kicked off in the next week or two and, um, and their budget people have a meeting set up with us and, and, and the contract crew about how, um, all the documentation for payments, things like that, all that stuff that maybe will take, take place and all that stuff. So that's, that's just about to be done, um, we've got a couple of drone responses to fires. Um, we did a rescue response, um, just earlier, uh, went out and, and did some overwatch for those guys. Um, went to Indianapolis, invited to go up to state, um, state office building for, uh, for, uh, communications, um, after tornado conference. And, um, so there were three of us that talked about tornadoes that happened in our areas and just different issues and challenges that we may or may not have had. Things went good, bad, all that stuff during, during the tornado response. And so I was pretty, pretty, uh, fortunate to be asked to come to something like that. I think it's nice for us to be in small towns out in southern Indiana and we get by to come speak at these things, just. Uh, it's, uh, speaks to the area and to the organization that this, that we've been for a few years now, so I'm really thrilled about that. Had a great discussion with Dora and her crew, we, um, I've talked about peer support program. Um, she's most in mental health, she being back, that kind of being their focus. And, um, so a guy from Lexington, Kentucky came up, we talked for, what, probably two, three hours and, and he's a talker. Um, he came, we met at the district meeting that, that morning, um, it was a great talk, it was a great discussion. Um, just, just numbers to kind of make this make sense to you, about seventy percent of firefighters and emergency services workers that die in line of duty is because of heart attacks. The next twenty percent is due to suicide. So ninety percent of in line of duty deaths, in, in, in my mind, I, I think some of that is potentially large portion of that should be preventable, right? We can do something about exercising things, staying in better shape, we can do something about mental health exercise and, and getting in better mental health shape. And then the rest of the deaths that happen in line of duty are sprinkled in single digits with, we probably should train more on this or that. So it's crazy to me that, that ninety percent of, of line of duty deaths, we, we can have some effect on, on that. I think we can have some great effect on that, so we're, we're teaming up them, they've got a program with the city police and she can tell you some more about that because I don't really all the answers in the answer, but we're looking to expand in that program, um, in partnership with them. And I know Lindsay's got a. I don't know, Lindsay's got a program called Partly Scary Kickoff as well, so I think, um, you know, between all of us, I think it's important to not just have a critical stress team. And even if we do invite a critical stress team to come down here, that everybody gets to talk with the critical stress team. So I, so this speech times before, probably in this meeting is, I've never taken a call where somebody's. Murdered three children, set a house on fire and, and shot themselves. I've never taken a phone call before. And um, so they brought the critical stress team, talk part apartment, the police department that were at the scene, nobody went over to talk to people, answered the phone. And that's a huge swing on this. So um, I, I think we've captured all the people that we, we know that we need to, 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 to help out and, and better, really, everybody's part of the team, we're on the same team. Um, so we just, we still don't want to miss anybody and, and I think we're often pretty start with that program, so, yeah, so, any questions?
One, we don't, what insurance would be on the boat?
I, I, I'm waiting on the quote, that's, that's one of the things that they asked me as well. Um, I, I even talked to a couple of their departments, they're gonna give me, try to get some information about their maintenance schedule and stuff like that on, on the uh, on the engines. I have the manufacturer's um, recommendation schedule on that. Um, there's no cost value, cause of course, you know, with that one, that's put together, they don't know what the market is. And um, and they ask about fuel and stuff like that and, you know, it's, every other day that changes, that's gonna be a pretty hard target to hit. And how much will be used, you know, at first probably not a lot, but um, you know how many times I get my boat out for, I guess, stuff like, yes, but, but um, but anyway. Um, like I, again, I, I think that's, I think both these, the peer support programs, both programs, I think both of them are long, long overdue, so. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, appreciate you, boy. Lot of digging. Go ahead.
Close the show? Alright, I'll be quick. Uh. So, talked to y'all before, but uh, following up on the grant modification, uh, first step of that, so convert our revolving loan fund to just a straight cash grant. So we don't have all the record keeping involved in that. Uh, first step, we got a whole public hearing, so we're gonna do that. Uh, at the next commission meeting on the September fifth. Okay, so we're gonna have the public hearing. Already advertised it and came out in uh, Tuesday's mass courier. So we've got notice out there, we'll have the hearing, assuming there's no issues uh, that we have to address. We'll have to pass a resolution and I'm gonna have that ready to, to go immediately after the hearing, so. Assuming nobody has any concerns. Um, I've got the resolution drafted, do you guys wanna see it before I bring it to the meeting?
Sure.
Okay, I'll get you a copy of it. Yeah, I'm just gonna slide it in there and see what you. So, I mean. And uh, after we get all that, then we can submit our request to the lieutenant governor's office. And I've already talked to them, they seem to be in, in support of this, they, they understand. Uh, like you're saying, if we, if we keep doing what we're doing. We're clearing to like twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two with this, so. They don't, they don't wanna keep getting reports.
Sure, still with questions about, how did COVID impact your?
Yes, I know, I'm gonna see if we can drop that. I don't know if it left. Uh, I also asked if we could claw back our fifty grand that we put in. Nope, they won't give it back, so. Uh, speaking of Oprah and our grant, I've got our annual uh, job retention report done and submitted it to them this week. Had a few. Grant recipients who didn't respond, but uh, I talked to them, they said I could go ahead with it and turn it while we had. We're still well above the fifty-one percent low middle income threshold, we're actually at eighty-nine percent, so it's not even close. So we're good there. Uh, our public portal that we've got out there, um, got a little bit more stuff uploaded, we put county council and commissioner meetings, meeting minutes. From like twenty ten to twenty twenty-four on there the other day, so, and people are looking.
I was gonna say, can you keep tracking?
I looked this morning, there, there were about three dozen, you know, hits since we uh, put it out on Facebook there. Uh, I've got a bunch of minutes to go clear back to like early nineteen hundreds. But the files are so big that I can't even upload it, it just stops, so I'm working on getting those cut down into little pieces that we can manage. Even if I get it uploaded, nobody ever be able to get it downloaded if we. So I'll keep working on that and just uploading them as, as I get them cut up and all, so.
I mean, you think, you think people would? Would go back that far?
Some, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, we've got them, they can get them, but I, okay.
Yeah, they're already scanned and digitized.
Oh, okay, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, as well, another, and uh, as far as laser fish, it's no more for the storage.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. Any questions for me? Alright.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Go on, go on.
Got these, I was afraid I wasn't gonna have time, but I had plenty of time, it worked out. The uh, first thing I want to mention is, we will have. It's road closure for the city of Madison, to close and place our bridge, the uh, superstructure on West Street, which is on Bridge Six. Got you, nice set plans, you can put those into commissioner's office or the auditor's office, you guys can fight over them.
I like the auditor's office, right there.
Um, that, that, the signs have been posted down there to close that August the nineteenth or after it will officially be closed on the twenty-sixth, the contractor will be on site. I did request for him to wait till at least eight o'clock before he started with all the signs and the demos to get part of that morning commute in and. They'll be ready for it, hopefully that afternoon and hopefully everything goes smooth sailing, we have good weather and we get that thing open back up in a timely manner. Um, a couple of the culvert lining projects that we've got underway, one of them on Jackson Road, one of them on Dubuffel Road are underway. The contractor's after work on Jackson Road today, he'll probably have those finished up tomorrow. Worst case scenario will be Monday, unless he gets a little bit there on Saturday, just finish knocking it out. Um, ship seal is complete as of right now. And the new truck that we ordered like a year ago is on the scene, so it has made it to our highway department, so we'll get the stickers and everything on it. Have it ready for service here right away. Its initiation is actually gonna be at the Hanover Touch Truck. That they're having Friday night, I think that's from five to seven, so I know, I think they had that on their website, so. I think they're gonna have several other vehicles and equipment there also for some kiddos to look at. They called and asked us to bring one over and that's already suited up with the center box and the snowplow and the lights all work, so that's one we're gonna send.
Well, adding on like, you know, what's gonna happen this winter now.
Yeah, we're uh, we're more prepared for it than what we've been for years and one of these days, yes, that four letter word is gonna show up. We've been very busy, so got a lot of things done, a lot of projects done, got a lot of things left to complete yet, so. We'll be back on the ditching a lot of the patching and getting things ready for next year and.
Cutting, cutting grass?
Cutting grass, yeah, there's money to have to cut too, so those have been running about every day, Johnson grass grows fast.
It's engulfing toll road now.
That is. But that's all I've got, unless you guys have any questions for me, so. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Jason? We're going through department, and you're not normally here, but you're here, so do you have anything you wanna?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
You guys?
Nope, it's coming up.
No. I figured, I.
Funny, yeah.
Uh, supposed to have the camera started Monday.
Okay.
And my understanding is they will replace the one that are wired, are, they're there and then do the install on the, where they have to run the wire and all that, so that's a plus. Getting bids on the animal shelter, the kennel ceilings that we talked about.
Okay.
And we're gonna replace the ceilings in case two, three years down the road, we have a new building, so this is just a. A quick down and dirty repairs and, and some lights while we're in there, replace the old uh, fluorescent ceiling lights. That's about it.
Okay, Brian didn't mention it, but I think he started working on a request for proposals for a design of an animal shelter. Uh, so we'll get that started and.
Very early.
Well, yeah, we, we've, people, just because it didn't get funding through ready, we're not gonna just stop, we're gonna try to at least get some things going. I think, I think we've talked about it before, that if you've got at least, this is what we're gonna do, if you got a picture, people are more apt to get behind the picture rather than just, well, you know, I think it ought to be like this, and so. Um, and that, depending on timing and stuff, that maybe that's through some ARP money and maybe some other things, but.
Talking to Ron about it, I thought maybe we're going about this all wrong, maybe we oughta. Be open to the look of a pole type building. You know, to build the offices and stuff in the front and then if we had to lay the block and the. The divisions for the kennels in the back, cause I'm sure it will come in a lot less and.
Sure, well, I think that's, you know, that's some of the things we.
If that's on the table, I mean.
Oh, no, I. Yeah, I mean, I think.
Just as an option.
Right, I think, I think in our, kinda here's what we'd like to see, we need to have some of, I don't think we just wanna open it wide open to let them do what they want. I mean, I think we experienced some of that in the jail design, the architects like to run wild.
Oh, it needs to look very pretty.
No, okay, so, but we need to, so I think those are some things that we need to put in there to.
Dress this up, make it look nice.
Oh, right, right, I think so.
Kinda like the jail, going for the pants, it really doesn't look like a.
Yeah, I agree.
Facility, so.
So, still going forward with that, um, there was some additional paperwork, they, they wanted about a week's turnaround time from uh, the RDA on the. Campground project, so I, I did just copy and paste from a lot of the things that we've put together, put it in there. Uh, they wanted some spending curves on how it would go, so I found a, a normal project spending curve and said, it's gonna be something like this, which it probably will, there'll be a little bit to start with, then it get. So, um, anyway, so we did that, so that's, I don't know when we'll hear back on uh, on any more on that, but I know uh, the state has taken a much. Uh, greater interest in these projects than they did in the first go around, first go around was federal money, the second is state money, so. I understand a little bit of that, but it is a different process. Um. So I think we're, we're moving, uh, we're getting to a point where we. We're, we've looked at the um, proposals for the infrastructure master plan and I think tomorrow we'll send out the. The notices on those who were selected, so get that wrapped up and move it forward. So, I think that'll be, th- th- once again, I mean, the, the purpose, just give us some, some ideas on things. Things that would need to be done if certain areas of the county would be. People are interested in developing them. And give us kind of a heads up, maybe point us in certain directions that we haven't, may not have thought of, or, or things that we hadn't thought of that are already there and might be useful. You know, I, I, we. The only, my only observation of Marble Hill now is from Google Maps, but there is some infrastructure there, you know, I don't know. If there's anything worth, as far as sanitary sewers concerned, so I don't know if there's anything there that would be useful or not, but so. Yeah, and once again, I mean, I'm not looking for, at the county to get into operating the sewer treatment plant, not at all, but um. You know, I think somewhere down the road, I mean, you, you drive through Charlestown and you see what's happening there along sixty-two and then looks a little bit further. Right across from the state park, there's some more, it looks like a development going there, it's coming up the sixty-two, just.
Coming our way.
And just, it'd be good to be ready then. Anyone from the public? You guys have anything, sorry, you're on the spoken. You have anything else?
No.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Alright.
Make a motion to it there and.
I will second your motion.